Good morning, welcome to this morning's Wednesday, November 21st, meeting of the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners. Role call please.
Commissioner Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Waymire.
Present.
Chair Renode.
Present.
Vice Chair Oglesby.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
If you would, please stand and join us in our pledge allegiance, followed by our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you this morning, as we come into a season of Thanksgiving, we thank you for leadership that you provided for us right here in Franklin County. And Father, we pray for each one of these men this morning, and the decisions that they have to make. And Father, that you would give them discernment, that you would give them the right frame of mind to do what you would have them to do. And again, Father, we just give you praise for this season of Thanksgiving, for the bountiful blessings you bestow upon each one of us. Father, just allow us to truly be grateful for the freedoms that we have, the things that come upon us, and Father, what you provide for us. Father, we thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir. Okay, correspondence and organizational business. Derek, anything?
Not at this time.
Okay, next is public comment. Before we get there, I know we have some people signed up. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. Commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. When we call your name, we'd ask that you come up to the podium, please, and state your name and address. Janet?
Pete Clark.
All right.
I'm Pete Clark. I live at 328 Popper Street in Wellsville. I own property out here at 2459 050 Highway, Eisenhower Road and 50 Highway. It's about two blocks west of the Elizabeth Leighton Center on the north side of the road. And I'm here to, I have been having problems out there, and I have kind of got them solved, but I'm in violation. And we moved a motor home in there, and that's what, at the time, we didn't know it was. But anyway, we'd like to have a year's waiver or some kind to leave it there. And I've got some reasons here for doing that, and I'll kind of go over them with you. And the business closed there in September 2015. And picture one shows the building and the motor home. And you can note that we've picked up property and kept it mowed. And soon after the building closed up, the business, we noticed there was people driving behind the club and leaving beer bottles and trash and various things, which we picked up from time to time. And we'd been told by more than one person, there was drug activity going on behind there, as it's a fairly long building, you can drive behind it and be out of sight. And then it wasn't too long before people started dumping building materials and trash in behind the building there. You can see figure two, in that grassy area back there that's not mowed, that's probably eighty to hundred feet wide and fifty to seventy-five foot deep, and that was all dump full of debris and whatever. And it's an easy place to dump, because it's hard to see from the road behind the building there. And since then, we did get a building, a burn permit, and burned it up. And also, they were dumping to the east of the building there, behind the trees. That's picture three. If you'll notice down that road, there's a drive turning into the left there behind the trees, and they dumped that all full of trash in there, too. And then when that was full, they started dumping up along that road there on the left side of the road there in the grass between the trees where you could see it. And in picture four there, or that picture four there, shows a dumpster that we'd had in there, and all the stuff that they dumped there, it wouldn't even hold it, there was so much dumped there. And then sometime in 2017, they started breaking into the buildings. And a storage building to the west of the main building was broken into several times, and things were stolen, like a deep fryer and a grill and miscellaneous items. And after most all the items that was valued, were taken, I had a five-ton central air conditioner that was working and soared in there. And I'll be darned if they didn't take and cut the copper and aluminum out of it and destroy it. And they probably got a couple dollars out of it, I don't know. The main building was broken into several times, and they took things like the sound system, and the coin-operated game machines, pool table lights, neon light, this about, and that, I don't know how many times it was in there. I know it was in there at least four times. And I have a fifty-year-old son that has an alcohol problem, and he was needed to a place to stay. And my wife and I thought of a way to solve the problems we're having, and we have an old motor home, and that's the one in picture, that we moved to the back of the property for him to stay in. And that way, he could help, we could help him, and he could help us. And that would stop the traffic from going behind the building. I can't prove there was drugs going on there, actually, that's what I was told.
You have one minute left, Mr. Clark.
Pardon?
One minute.
Okay, well, then, Larry informed us of the violation, and we talked to him about it, and there's other things I had to say, but I guess I have time. But if you would offer, give us a variance, I think it would be a public safety issue as not being anything going on behind the club, trash wouldn't be being dumped, and it's kind of like he's a watchman. And I don't see it would cause a problem with the county, as if somebody else wanted a variance, this would be a kind of a special thing where it's more or less like a furnish in some place for a watchman to take care of things. Since it's been there, there hasn't been no break-ins and no trash dumped.
Your time is up.
Okay.
I assume you're going to work with Mr.?
Oh, I wanted to say, too, that Larry has been working with me, and he's been very nice about it.
Okay. I got a quick question.
Sure.
Is there, is that not a house east of the?
There is a house there, yes.
So you want to live in that house?
No, not right now, no.
So is that your house?
Yes.
That no one lives in it?
No.
Is it not in?
It needs some repairs, too. We have thought about probably sometime in that period of time, getting it so where he can move there or something, or if he have use.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Joe Ferguson.
Before you start my timer. Derek and I had a conversation before, but I'm still going to read my comments today to you. My name is Joe Ferguson. I live at 3335 Rock Creek Road, Ottawa, Kansas. And I believe Derek told me this morning that he had submitted my letter for an open seat on that to you. I had brought you copies, but he'd already done that. I want this board to succeed. I want Franklin County to succeed, so here's my comments. And this I wrote yesterday before I went to bed. I'm speaking to you today because this is apparent to me that lower-level employees are making decisions that you should be making in this county. On September 12th, I gave Larry Rod Rod, I talked to Larry Rod Rod about how someone would get on that board, and he told me, just provide him a letter, tell him why, and my qualifications. So I went home, I typed out my letter, and I came back that same day, because I knew you had a responsibility in September to pick the people to replace the vacating members as set forth by this commission. If other people are going to make, and I'm just going to cut this short and sweet here. My letter was not submitted as of yesterday morning by Larry Rod Rod. Only two people, three people, rather, were submitted for the zoning appeals and the two vacancies on the planning board. Mine was not. But a week or two ago, when I had a nephew dying in the hospital, I'd left the hospital and got a call from Larry. And he praised me for applying, and you would have thought I walked on water with that conversation. I wish you could have heard it. But he told me the decision had been made to put two other people on that board. So that tells me that either his first-line supervisor, or some of you, I'm not accusing anybody, but somebody in this room made the decision that I wasn't going to be selected for that board, and now I can live with that. That's fine, if that's the way you want to do business here. But you want people to come into Proximity Park, and you want to build up this community. Will they send field people out to gauge how this community is being ran by your elected officials? And I don't feel like you guys are being upfront on a lot of things, and it should be. And I think another reason, I'm going to mention two things here. I spoke passionately a couple years ago about your guys' funding or using TGT funding. But I also filed a complaint with the Sheriff's Department against this board, because you were violating your own regulations or charter resolutions, rather. But Jeff Richards found that there was nothing there. Personally, I think he should have turned it over to the KBI and let them do it, and let an outside agency do it. But I'm also going to break protocol here, and I didn't ask Gene if I could do this. But Gene got a call from one of you commissioners this morning, and said that Joe probably won't be picked for that job. And the reason being is because my association with Sherry Geist, because she brought me the information that I brought to the Sheriff's Department two years ago. Now, I know we had our conversation this morning, Derek, but that still tells me there's a lot of underhanded crap going on in this community. For God's sake, if you want people to respect you and love you and love this community and come to this community, wake up, folks. Stop the underhanded deals, put everything out front, and be honest and be respectful of the citizens that represent you, or you represent them. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Jean Hurt.
Jean?
Jean Hurt, 219 West Fourth Street in Linden, Kansas. Okay. When I found out, when I saw on the internet what was coming today, and I knew it was, because he'd made the comment that he was going to put it on here for the planners today, but when I saw on there that Joe's letter was not before you, I thought to myself, what in the hell is going on? Joe had put his letter in, and here it is, and you guys got it now. I understand from what Joe just told me, what Brown did by giving him, sending, giving you this letter now. See, see, this is, this is a situation where, like Joe kind of hinted, you know, underhanded stuff, and stuff that's been done in this place for sixteen damn years. You know, I tell you, this should have had, and for the two people that are also applying to be on the planners, as well as Joe, they're just as important as Joe, his letter and theirs. But his wasn't on there, for everybody to see on the internet. Here's the letter. Now, who's responsible? That's Elrod. Of all the years he's served at doing his duties on this, on the planner deal, that's uncalled for. I knew, I went through a lot of these deals with the years of the different commissioners of putting people on the planning committee. Yes, I have. And to me, that's dirty. That's wrong, and it was terrible to him.
Hey, Jean?
Now.
I'm not going to sit here and listen to you call.
You're not going to. Well, I'm going to say it, because this is why, this is why it has to be done the right way. And I don't think it should be done today, because you're going to have to interview these people. And words were on there saying, being interviewed, okay? So you need to interview them, because I was in the capacity of hiring people years ago, what I did. You don't only see their letter, but you want to see the emphasis they put on themselves, why they want to be on the planning board, or anything that they want to be on. You have to see that from each one of the individuals to make a proper decision. Remember, those principles over there on the wall that you code, that you county commissioners have to go by. Now, the decision has to be made by you today, what you're going to do. And what you do here today is going to be, you know, God. So, and like I said, it's a situation where it's been done wrong to Joe, and you need to rectify that. And God almighty, help us all. If this is the way this is going to be for moving forward to the new year, and trying to move this county forward, God help us all.
Got all of them? Okay, first item on the agenda, consider interviewing, appointing, and swearing in two members.
We need to do the consent agenda first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I better do that. Consent agenda today, we have approved the Franklin County Commission meetings for November 14th, minutes. Claim vouchers in amount of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and twelve cents. And consider to approve the payroll for the 2018 longevity payroll of one hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I'd make much to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renode?
Yes. All right, our first item of business, consider interviewing, appointing, and swearing in two members to the planning commission, and one member to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
And I'm going to step in and kind of quarterback this and respond to some of the allegations. This is obviously before all of you in a public meeting today. It's on the agenda, public consideration, it's been noticed up, you have it. We were in an interesting situation this time, in that we have more applicants than we have positions. Since I've been here, that's never happened. And not knowing exactly how to handle that, I talked with Chair Renode, and he asked me to make a recommendation, the logic being, didn't ask me, he asked staff, the logic being Larry and I work with the planning commission far more than you guys do, so look at these, give us a recommendation, and we'll take a look at it. What was attached to the agenda was our recommendation. Having said that, we were also cognizant to make sure that you had Joe's information, because he wants to volunteer, and he should be considered. I didn't attach his info to a public agenda, because to me, it would be cruel for me to put on a public document, I recommend these two, but I don't recommend him. Like, I, you know, I wouldn't bring in the Public Works Directors that we didn't hire and bring them in front of you guys. Like, that's, to me, that's not the compassionate thing to do. And so, having said that, you've asked for a recommendation, that is what you're going to get from us, because it is ultimately your decision. You have the info from all three candidates. Given that you have the info, we're sitting in a public meeting, the allegation that there's something underhanded is absolutely absurd. The allegation that my staff are dirty or improper are absolutely absurd. Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Hurt could have reached out to me, they could have asked me questions at any point throughout this process, and they did not. The allegation that this has something to do with Sherry Geist is absolutely absurd. And you know what it does? It takes away from our candidates here, who are incredibly qualified to sit on the planning commission. It devalues them, and that's unacceptable to me, because we have two fantastic candidates with a plethora of relevant experience, and that is why they were chosen. It has nothing to do with Joe. Like, this decision has to do with the other candidates and what they bring to the table. You ask me to make a recommendation, I am going to recommend who I think will be the best fit for this county. And in this instance, I believe that Ms. Campbell and Mr. Pickett will be those two. We'll have vacancies in a year. If Mr. Ferguson, we feel is the best fit then, then we'll recommend Mr. Ferguson. But I cannot sit here and listen to that crap, because there's just no merit behind it, so.
You know, it's sour grapes, and I think that's a good example why we don't want to go that way. That's, will you handle yourself when decisions made you don't agree with?
Well, going back, as you said, we just hired some Public Works Director, a position that is extremely important, and again, we trusted our staff to do that. That's the way the board is operated, is that we ask you to do the interviewing, to go through the process, to make a recommendation to us. And obviously, we have the option to not take that recommendation or take it. That is our responsibility. But certainly, we would entrust the people who are closest to working with those people and doing the stuff, they ought to know who would be the best to fill the needs that we have. And that's what we have Larry Force, what we have you Force, what we have all the other directors and department heads and so forth to do.
Same as when we make large purchases, we get recommendations.
Sure.
There's a lot of vetting goes with that. When we make a zoning change, you know, there's certainly a lot of input from staff and the recommendation from the lower board for that. We routinely make decisions based on good information, recommendation, expertise from other people. That's smart.
That's, and so, Larry, I think you can go ahead and add to this then?
No. And I would ask that you hold for a second, Larry. This is something that we took seriously. Anytime someone wants to volunteer with the organization, I, someone who wants to take their own personal time to help, I think that is incredibly admirable, and those folks should be given consideration. So Larry and I look at this, and we kind of have the same thoughts, but to make sure that we didn't have tunnel vision, we brought a couple other members of the management team in and said, hey, why don't you guys look at these and see who you would recommend, just thinking that maybe another perspective would be offered? And we got the same recommendations back from them. Like, this wasn't some underhanded, it was a conscious attempt to put the best people in the spots. And so, I will let Larry sing the praises of Ms. Campbell and Mr. Pickett, and exactly tell you exactly why we felt they would be the better fit, so.
Derek?
Well, first of all, I would like to open my comments with the fact that we had one position that was officially open. That position was Ms. Peckham's position. She had served her two terms, and therefore had to be replaced, and that was the only position we had open until we got the resignation of Mr. Stottermeyer. After the primaries, it looked as if he would probably be the elected county commissioner. We had discussions at that time, or I had discussion with Don, whether he would want to resign, so we would have time to start giving notice. And in fact, we were in a position to do that, then he realized that, well, gosh, there could be a write-in, and maybe I won't get elected, and I would like to serve on the planning commission if I'm not elected. I didn't receive his letter of resignation until November. So some of this was delayed, so that we could handle all this together as one item before the county commissioners, instead of coming here three or four times.
And our canvas was last Monday, like, literally, a week and a half ago. Like, we had this on in just over a week, so we had to wait until the election was finalized, because Don wasn't going to submit his letter until then, so.
But I had received a letter from Mr. Pickett earlier. He had discussed this in August, after the primaries. And I told him the same information that I told Mr. Ferguson, you submitted a letter giving us your qualifications and background. The planning, the county commissioners would like to have that. They would also like to have an interview for people that are recommended. And based on that information, then, we have, Derek and I have evaluated the candidates, and we feel that we have two very, very qualified candidates. One to replace Juanita Peckham, and we like to achieve a balance of women and men. That's something that's not always been the situation here in the county, particularly in the back fifteen, sixteen years ago. But it is becoming more and more important that we do achieve that type of balance with our appointed board members. And therefore, we have given a favorable recommendation to Ms. Campbell. She is the only lady that has submitted for that particular position. I think she's very well-qualified, and I think that her letter is self-explanatory. She is also here available this morning to, for your interviews.
Chris has been someone who's just, I think she is a wonderful member of the community. She's someone who's been involved with tourism. She's someone who frequently offers her time to our tourism director, and I know Susan is greatly appreciative and is far better for it. I mean, Chris, over the course of, I will say, years, but maybe decades, has shown commitment to this community, and she is exactly the type of person that I would like as an ambassador to this organization. We, she's going to give an objective, rational opinion, which is only going to help this board, because it's going to help ensure that the recommendations you're getting from the planning commission are sound. And so, just given her demonstrated commitment to the community, I, my thoughts are, we would be absolutely foolish to not, not bring her on, and so.
I think the planning and zoning board, a good mix of technical knowledge and then community vested interest. Those two, you know, board members who either are strong in one or the other, and I think that's what we have here. Mr. Pickett has some really good technical knowledge, and I think will make him expert in some of the areas that we deal with, and then Ms. Campbell, just very strong vested interest in the community. I think more than others, she could say with knowledge, this is the type of community we want to live in or not, and know that because of her ties to the community.
And I would certainly endorse that, because this is the very reason that we recommend Jim Pickett for the other position that is being vacated by Mr. Stottermeyer, as he does have the technical background, but he's also very, very familiar with the powers and duties of the planning commission, because he's presented numerous items before the Miami County Planning Commission and other planning commissions throughout eastern Kansas. And like I said, I've known him professionally for years, and in fact, his agency was the company that designed the sewer system for Centropolis. So he's very knowledgeable in a great number of areas that would be conducive to making decisions, I think, that come before you regarding zoning and subdivision matters. Now Nancy Ball was a former planning commissioner. She has submitted a letter desiring to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals, which we've had some issues of trying to fill positions on that for a long time, so we're grateful that she's made that application, and her experience with having served on the Franklin County Planning Commission was going to be very helpful in that area. So again, that was the reason that she was recommended to fill that position. I really have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions. The applicants are here, if you choose to, well, to interview them at this time.
Certainly, we can start with Chris, if she'd like to come up. Morning, Chris.
Good morning.
If you would like to just kind of reinforce me of what you said in your letter, just give us a couple, just a very, very brief, just what you're wanting to do.
Well, obviously, I believe in the-
Well, um, obviously, I believe in the, in the community, and I believe in serving the community. I've run a business for thirty-five years, and, um, we own property in the county as well as in the city. And I just think it's important to give back to the community and serve.
Any questions for Chris at all?
I do have to say, when Dee called me and asked me to come to enter, to meet, so the commissioners could meet me, and I thought, they all know me. Good or bad, they know me.
For a long time.
For a long time. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Pickett? Morning.
Could we just briefly introduce yourself to you?
Sure, I'm Jim Pickett, and Larry has kinda gone over some things that we've worked together, as he said, professionally, uh, in the past. Uh, I'd also like to, something that he hadn't mentioned is my prior service as county engineer and, and deputy director of public works in, in, uh, two counties in Kansas. Uh, also, uh, as I, uh, continued on in my career, I ended up last fourteen years working for KDOT, and my final stint for eight years was a metro engineer for them. So we've had the opportunity to see and witness and be a part of, uh, planning activities and ramifications that can occur, uh, should you not take off, take the opportunity to make some corrections when, when you can, when you've got an opportunity to think about it and talk about it. So, uh, when I became aware of this position, I thought this would be an opportunity for me to get more acquainted with the community. We've just lived here for about a little over three years, and now we're getting more and more involved into volunteering into the community and, and look forward to this opportunity.
Make you some technical knowledge and make you very well suited for the position, so, thank you for being here.
I thank you, sir. You wanna do, go ahead and do the, uh, planning zoning appeals board as well, Nancy?
Call Joe up, give him the opportunity to talk. Joe, do you wanna come talk?
No, I'm gonna draw my nomination, 'cause I think you have selected the two, but I would caution, um, the commissioners from, uh, making, uh, comments like what I referred to on a conversation this morning to another party, that, in reference to Sherri Geis, that was an uncalled-for statement by that commissioner, and you know who you are. Thank you.
Okay. Nancy Ball?
Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Tell us a little bit about yourself then, and what you'd like to do.
Absolutely. Um, our family has lived in the area for fifteen years. We've been, lived in Wellsville, I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce. My husband, uh, is a part owner of a business in Wellsville. And, uh, I've been active in, um, Boy Scouts and Campfire Girls and, um, children's causes. Um, I'm the first one that did the five K walkathon for the local food pantry in Wellsville. And, um, I, I love Franklin County. We're gonna retire here, and I wanna do everything I can to serve and be of assistance in any way that I can.
Okay. Any other questions?
How many terms did you?
I believe it was, oh, Larry. Three?
God, you served three years.
Was it three years? I think it was three years. The book was really thick.
Yeah.
I, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, you have the information before you and the recommendations. Uh, look for a motion, unless you have more questions. I'll make a motion to appoint James Pickett and Christine Campbell to the Franklin County Planning Commission, and to appoint Nancy Ball to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and request, request the county clerk to swear on all three members.
I'd second that.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Vanod.
Yes.
Okay. Swear those in then, before we go to the next agenda item?
Do you wanna do that now?
Better do it while you have them.
Yeah.
You guys, all three wanna come up?
Stand there?
I.
James Pickett?
Christine Campbell. Nancy Ball. Do solemnly, sincerely, and truly, do solemnly, sincerely, and truly...
Declare and affirm.
Declare and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
As a member, as a member, of the, how can you state your office?
Of the lord of planning commissioners?
Planning and, and Board of Appeals.
So help me God.
So help you God.
And I do this under the penalties of perjury.
And I do this under the penalties of perjury.
Thank you.
Hey, you bet. Thank you, guys.
and Pay Plan. Gail? Joanne? All right.
Good morning, commissioners. In front of you are changes that we are recommending to our pay plan. Uh, we've had a reorganization, not only in, uh, public works where they're assuming solid waste duties, as well as the juvenile detention going to twelve-hour shifts. And in order for us to make the changes to the job descriptions and to post for these positions, we need to make sure that they're on our pay plan. So what you have in front of you is to add a juvenile detention shift lead to grade fifteen, and adding a solid waste superintendent to a grade twenty-five.
These have all been discussed, vetted before?
Yes.
Especially during budget and then on their own, so this is just making the, uh, mechanics of it work, the internal parts.
Say, at this point, this is just largely procedural. Peg Pearson's been acting as our solid waste superintendent, and, and that framework's been working incredibly well. I think she's really good at it. I think having public works over both of those departments is, I mean, we're already seeing some efficiencies from that move, and so, um, pleased with that. And then Kinz worked hard to make sure that, uh, the shift lead positions are what's gonna benefit his department, and, there he is. Um, and they've, they've been a good budgetary move as well, and so certainly support, support these decisions.
Ready to make a motion if you're ready?
Yep, I'm ready for motion if we're...
I'd make a motion to modify the current pay plan as follows. Add grade fifteen juvenile detention shift lead, remove from grade twenty, the detention center shift supervisor. Add grade twenty-five solid waste superintendent, remove from grade twenty-five director of solid waste.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire? Chair Vanod.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Chair Vanod notes that. Thank you.
Does Mr. Hurd wanna speak to that issue item? Mr. Hurd, do you wanna speak to item, agenda item number one?
Yes, I did. That's what I just told her. I signed up for it.
I, I missed, I missed it on there, Gina. If you'd like to speak to that, I know we've taken the action on it, but Mr. Ferguson was, uh, withdrew his name, but if you would still like to speak to that agenda item, I, I know you done it earlier, but if you'd like to speak to say something, I, I'll give you the mic if you'll...
What I have to say now is this. The people that were, the other two, Pickett and Hurd, are good people. I never said nothing bad about those individuals. Not to make, he's trying to make it sound like to me, because I'm not here to do that at all. My quorum was, over the years that I've been involved in this county for sixteen years, this is the first time it's ever been handled this way. And I know what I'm talking about. Mr. Dunn knows too, that this isn't the first time it's ever been handled this way. But see, the main thing here that I'm trying to, emphasis I'm trying to get across is, is this. Joe's name and his letter was not on the internet with the other two. It was not done properly by that. You know, Waymire, why are you acting like this?
Hey, hey, wait, just, it...
Now, you know, I, to me, to me is, is this here. The county needs to move forward, and you will with these two on there that, that you've chosen. But what I'm saying is, that was done wrong. That's what I was pointing it out. I knew something had been differently done than ever has been done before here. Now, if that's the procedure you're gonna do, then you need to change your bylaws, you need to change the internet on how you do this, because that was not done correctly like I had spoken weeks and weeks before. So, like I said, that's what I wanna emphasize here. Those are good people, and I never said nothing bad about them, because I had no intentions of saying anything bad for what they have or what credentials they have. They are good people. But Joe is too. You never even commented about his letter of what's in that letter that he has done for his, his commitment to life and why he would be a good person. Okay? That's what I'm emphasizing here. The procedure was done wrong. It was done wrong, and it hurt Joe, and it makes it look like it comes back on to me or whatever. It's not the case. My concern is, his name and his letter was not on the internet, whereas one of the letters of concern of wanting to be on there. He was the first one, more than the other two did. That's...
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, Monday, um, I would like to have a study session. I know it's the Monday after a, a holiday weekend, but, um, have been in conversations with Ransom Memorial, and they, they really need more space right now. Um, and we've offered them suite one, but in talking with their staff, there's some value to, what they'd really like is suite two. Now, I think we have some concerns about giving them all of that space, because I think we have our own space needs, but I think we could rearrange that in a way where they can have portions of suite two, just move a wall effectively, so that they can have contiguous space. I guess their reimbursement rates are better if they can keep certain services all under one address. And so, what I wanna talk about Monday is potentially, uh, well, what the county's space needs are, what Ransom is looking for, and what a remodel of suite one and suite two look like. Been in conversations, uh, we've reached out to Lloyd Builders to help us get a rough idea of what that might cost. They actually have some availability real soon if it's something that we wanted to do. I've spoke with Ransom. Um, they are excited and certainly willing to let us kinda walk through that process, but that's, just, uh, get that on your radar. That is what we'll talk about Monday, and I'll, I'll have HR and, and my maintenance director, and Chief Robbins needs more space, so, um, we'll have a group here. And then Wednesday of next week, um, we're gonna have David Artaberry and, and Tyler Ellsworth down. Um, we're approaching time to start the next bond issue for proximity park, and, and, uh, we knew this was coming, and, and frankly, very pleased, because the second bond issue is gonna be far lower than what we anticipated it would. But the first step of that process is to execute a resolution authorizing the sale of the, the proceeds, so something Janet and I have been working on with them for some time, but that will be in front of you on Wednesday. Um, and that's all I have today.
Okay.
I've got one question. Derek, a gentleman here was talking about the, uh, old Cheyenne country up there on the hill. What's your thoughts about that?
Yeah, not, today is the first I've learned about that, and, and what I'll do is I'll sit down with Larry, and, and the two of us can reach out to him. Like, I'm not so fluent in our regulations that I know what the best solution for this individual might be. I will tell you, and this is just off the cuff, based on what I heard this morning, I think if it's something we can do to, to kinda help and stay within our regulations, I, I think we should strongly consider it. But I'll sit down with Larry, and we'll, we'll work through all of that.
And I think, um, Mr. Clark's modi this morning was simply to make us aware, he was with Larry and was trying to avoid a...
Oh, yeah.
A big special use permit or whatever else, just trying to work something out where it could be a benefit to county and that, so I...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Emergency management? There you go. Morning.
Um, got a couple things that we've been doing. One, uh, we started issuing burn permits first December generally for, uh, twenty nineteen or the next year. Uh, we did not make any changes this year, uh, to the burn permit, uh, as of yet. We know that, uh, we've got some things to work on, and I'm wanting to get some input from, uh, uh, some of the citizens. Uh, we did ask, uh, last week at the, uh, county fire chiefs meeting, uh, if the fire chiefs wanted to step up and be a little more involved. Uh, that was pretty much, they want my office to continue to handle, uh, the burn permits and the no-burn days. Uh, they're happy with that. Um, I know we've had, in the past, some of the big ranchers have had, uh, some discussions with me and, and my office about, when we put a no-burn day on, uh, they feel that, uh, they can still burn, and if it's plowed in three areas and there's a road on one side that it won't go nowhere, well, it's not just for one person in the county where, uh, City of Ottawa, for instance, goes out and looks at the burn before they allow a burn permit. We can't do that. Uh, we have two or three hundred people on good days calling to burn, there's no way we can cover that. The fire chief said that if we put a no-burn day on, it's a no-burn day, and that's the way they wanna leave it. So there'll be no changes to the burn permit now, but we are looking at a prescribed burning workshop, uh, the first part of the year also, if we can get that scheduled through the extension office and K-State Forestry.
On that, Alan, when you call in, it's, uh, it's not specific where you're actually gonna be burning, you just asked if you can burn.
That's correct, and...
I think it oughta be more specific, like, tell them where you're gonna burn at.
One of the issues is how we can keep track of that, and that takes people to answer the phone and to write that down. Um, so those are some things that we've gotta look at. If there's ways we can get it to where the person can even put it online, I wanna look, I know, Colt, we've talked the last couple years about some way of even issuing the permits online. So those are things I'm trying to figure out, is how we can do it so that it doesn't take additional personnel. And I know that the workload in dispatch on a good day, they've got two, maybe three people in there, and if you get three hundred extra calls coming in, then they're having trouble handling emergency calls. So, uh, it's something that I'm gonna continue to look at for the next year and try to get some, we do need to update the permit, uh, but where we need to go with it, it takes a lot of input from, uh, people besides just the county folks to figure all that out.
Would, would that be something, Alan, that could populate a county map, so if somebody called in and said, hey, there's a fire over here, they could look and say, yeah, somebody's already plugged in, that they have a, they have a burn permit going, and we don't start sending people?
Yeah, and that's one of the things we're looking at, and just driving cell phones is one of our big issues. Uh, we just did a call the other night on a brush pile that was burning, and it was somebody driving by, it was a legal burn, and they were driving by and saw the, the glow in the, the sky. Well, cell phones is what's caused a lot of our issues too. So, we're working on that. Uh, the big thing, uh, I wanna talk about is last Tuesday, we had an exercise, uh, it was funded by, uh, the Northeast Region Homeland Security Council. We are, at the end of it, we had a lot of good discussions, and we're going to build on it, and next year about this time in October or November, there's going to be a two-day full-scale exercise to where we actually take the same scenario, and the, the city emergency operations center is staffed for two days, and the county emergency operations center is staffed for two days. So, and you'll get updates on that and be invited to participate in that exercise.
Questions? Questions for Alan?
I might point out that Alan's tabletop exercise was at the exact same time that we were canvassing boats. I know some of us talked about that and, and just the logistics didn't work. I would have liked to have been there, and I know some of you would have as well. But I, I have gotten several phone calls from some of the other agencies complimenting Alan and Tom on that exercise and how well it was ran, and the same thing happened last year. I, I think these guys put on a great exercise, and, and I'm, I'm proud that it's something that people come to this county to participate in, so, so appreciate that, Alan.
Thank you. And that's one thing we discussed at the end of that exercise also, they asked, well, what's going to be the dates? You know as well as I do, we can set the dates right now and there's going to be conflicts with somebody. You don't set a date for a disaster. It is what it is. So, we take what we've, what we've got and we deal with it. So, that's what we do on the exercises also, and we try to make them as real life as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ken? Sheriff?
Want to question? I'll start by also kind of responding to what was said during public comments on the complaint that I received on the transient guest tax. I think it was earlier in this year. Just for, so that you guys are aware, when I receive a complaint like that, the reason it's handled in-house by me is because I don't think that it's fair to my staff to have to conduct any type of investigation that could end up implicating anyone in the county. From my understanding of, of what that was, there was nothing that was on my end. I did reach out to legal counsel, I reached out to other organizations, some of which were mentioned this morning, and that determination on any type of crime occurring there was not simply mine, that was, that was with a lot of input and being staffed by other organizations as well, just so that you guys are, are aware of that. As you know, we've had a lot of expense this year with the horses, having to seize horses earlier in the year. We have two horses that remain that, that we have, so we're working on getting, getting those adopted out as well. A big chunk of the expense for that was not ever billed to us. There were three different places that were taking care of horses and doing medical stuff on it that was taken care of by Humane Society of the United States, so we didn't see all those expenses. But just so you guys are aware, we, we've taken a pretty big, we have taken a hit on that. I've talked to some of the other counties that have done it, and they said it usually costs them around $100,000 when, when they've had to do something like this. We're not at that level yet, but we're about $78,000, I believe, is, is where we are at this time. So we're still actively working to get the, the last two horses adopted out. Similar, I guess, but not really. We do have about nine inmates that are farmed out right now. We've, we've just had a lot of people that have, that have been coming to jail. And so, we've, we've, have way more people than we had bed space, and so we've, we've had, we, we do have people farmed out. And this is really the first time since I've been here that we've had to farm out this many people in, in one year, so we, but we do have, we do have several farmed out. That's why it was beneficial to us. We have that MOU in place with Miami County, and that, that's where we have the majority of them at, at this time. We do still have one up in Wyandotte County, and that's just simply for facility reasons and staffing reasons. I mean, he's someone that, that we were not, were not properly equipped to handle here, and no one else around us was either. We had tried those places and they did not want him back, so. Our jail contract, the food service company that's going to be coming in will be starting on the 29th of this month. I don't know why they're starting on a Thursday, and it's not, I, I don't know, I don't get that part, but they'll be there the 29th. And our, our current kitchen staff, our cook has, had already told us that she had announced her retirement. She's retiring December 1st. And so along those lines, we, as you're probably aware, you should have received an invitation for a recognition ceremony that the sheriff's office is going to be doing, and we intend to be recognizing her for her years of service there, as well as Ken is going to be getting a really good assistant director here real soon, and they're someone that's coming, coming from, from our office. We're, we're very happy for, for Todd and for, and for Ken. I think it's going to be a great fit for everyone overall. I think the county's going to benefit from him being in that position, so we look forward to that. He'll be recognized there, and I, I just would make a request that either Chairman or note, if you or whoever you would choose to delegate, we'd like to have one of, the, the commission represented as far as the official delegation up there to join us on the platform.
That's on the 27th, right?
That is. That'd be next Tuesday, begins at 4:00 PM.
Okay.
Jeff, are you not being recognized at that as well?
Well, people will recognize who I am, but no.
Right, right. Haven't you recently graduated from a certified public manager's program?
I, I have. I graduated from the command school last Friday, and then the 30th is when I'll be, receive my certified public manager designation.
Well, that's fantastic, and certainly, I think it deserves recognition, and I would encourage the board to come to that ceremony next week. And then you bring up the horses. Even in a big budget like the sheriff's, $78,000 of expenses is, is hard to absorb, and so we're working with him on that to, to make sure that, you know, we get through that as best we can, so.
Other than that, if you, any of you have any questions for me?
Anybody else?
You'll probably also see some of us, obviously, we're doing No Shave November, that we haven't changed standards, and so you'll see, but you may also see some of us out beginning Friday in uniform, ringing the bells for Salvation Army. And that is a volunteer, and we're not paying anyone to do that. They would be volunteering their own time, but we, I did authorize them to be in uniform to do that. This is another way to demonstrate to the community our commitment to service, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Janet? Okay, go into commissioner comments and board reports.
I haven't been detained since last minute.
Hospital board met last evening. They got another award, Press Ganey Award for Excellence. The auxiliary is buying an ultrasound for the emergency room, and October was a good month financially.
All right.
Last Thursday, I was at Gardner for the Prairie Falls Finance and Audit Board Meeting, and while their numbers look a little bit better, it's still very challenging. It's very challenging for them as they look forward to 2019's budget. Things don't always come out like you hope they will, and, and it's a struggle for them. It's a struggle for them personnel-wise as they look to try to, to get the very best of employees there when pay is always one of the issues, and benefits is an issue. When you have people that work for an organization without benefits, it's difficult to attract the best of the best, and so that's one of the areas that they're, they're contemplating and looking at as well, and trying to, they, they put a pretty tight rein on 2019's budget to, to try to pull everything in together and, and make it all work. So, I commend Melissa on what she's done with the organization, and she has some really good plans, and I think as she attracts and fills the people in the right positions, that organization will continue to, to become stronger and, and a little more self-sufficient, so that was the gist of what happened last Thursday.
Roy?
Yes, I went to the ECAN Annual Banquet last night at Ottawa University, and the whole night was kind of to honor Richard Jackson, who's going to retire next June, and he's been with ECAN 49 years, and in the community action field for over 50 years, so it was a great night. Richard was keynote speaker, and he had memories of his many years in community action, and just a good evening and appreciation of Richard Jackson's time serving the community.
Okay. I haven't been in any meetings, so I would consider a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All right, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.